Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, I'm Diane Mahan, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Dunn?
Here.
Joe Kuro?
Here.
John Hurd?
Here.
Steve De Corsi?
Here.
Town staff, when I call your name, also please respond in the affirmative. Our town manager, Adam Chapdeline?
Here.
Our town council, Doug Heim?
Here.
And Ashley Maher from the Select Board Office is taking minutes remotely. This is an open meeting of the Arlington Select Board being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda Materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not require ensuring public participation unless there is a public hearing on the agenda. This meeting will feature some public comment during certain agenda items, including the election update and polling location discussion. It will not feature citizens' open forum, consistent with the board's practice when more and article hearings are on the agenda. To my understanding, some members of the public would like to provide some comments on the election process. So after members of the board have spoken, I, as the chair, will ask for a list of persons wishing to provide comment and call on each in turn. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the chair before speaking. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join in. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that anything broadcasted may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. Finally, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comments, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard and the board's webpage. We recommend that members and public follow the agenda as posted on Novus, unless I know it otherwise. Now, before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of Select Board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. And each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. I would like to ask our town manager, Mr. Chapdeline, to also make one additional comment about the manner in which we'll be conducting the meeting tonight. Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention for those participating tonight that we will be trying something different than the past, I believe, two board meetings. This is, I think, the third meeting that we've been using the webinar format, which had been presenting with a limiting factor of not allowing participants' video to be shown when speaking. That was also being performed, or that was also went in line with security mitigation that we put in place after the Conservation Commission had been Zoom bombed several weeks ago with some very explicit and disturbing imagery being demonstrated on the screen. So tonight, what we're going to try to do is promote those in attendance who want to speak to panelists, the panelists positioned temporarily, so they can show their videos if they so choose. But I do want to mention that we do so, understanding that we're shifting the balance slightly towards a heightened risk. Where is that, or we're in that? If someone whose name we know wants to speak, the chair shall call on them. If someone's name we don't know wants to speak, the chair shall call on them, and we can't predict what might come up on the screen. So I'm not saying that this is an unacceptable risk, but a risk that we should understand before doing it. Second, as a matter of equity, I know there's equity concerns on both sides of this coin, but I think it's important to mention that for those who are calling in or who don't have the technology at home to utilize video, they won't have that same access to show themselves on video as those participating do. So with that, though, I didn't want anybody to be surprised that when called upon tonight, we will promote them to panelist, and if they so choose, their video will be enabled. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. And as we said, we're just gonna, every week's different, and we're gonna keep trying to make accommodations and see what works and what doesn't work. I apologize in advance for, but you don't know unless you try. So we're gonna try, and my colleagues are also all in agreement with that. So with that, we will go to Agenda Item Two, which is the Third Quarter Report for 2020. Mr. Chapdeline?
So thank you, Madam Chair. What I'll do is I will test this for the first time. Should be a safe test. We'll ask Sandy Poehler to come and address the board in regards to this third quarter report.
Our deputy town manager, Mr. Poehler.
Somehow I just got reposted, so.
There you go. Well, there he is.
Hello.
Sandy, should I also bring Eda in as a panelist for this as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Nice beard, Sandy.
Oh, my God. I forgot to shave. Wow. Thanks.
She should be coming in here. Let's see. We just, we just lost Eda.
Oh.
Eda, do we have you? Here she is.
Okay, so our comptroller, Eda Cody, is also joining us. Our deputy town manager, Mr. Poehler?
Yes. Hello. So I will cut to the chase right from the beginning and say that this report, which is through three quarters of the year through March, at that point showed that we are basically on track for both our spending and our revenue, which, both of which is good news. I'll also say that Eda and I have looked at our revenue and spending through April, even though all those numbers are not fully in at this point, most of them are, and they continue to be on track. The reality is that 77% of our revenue comes from, in the general fund, comes from taxes. And those tax collections have been coming in steadily. The other revenue that we've gotten so far, including local receipts, have also come in steadily through April. We've actually hit our budget target. Through March, we were just a little bit short of that. And state aid has been coming in steadily, unless there's a disruption to that by the end of the year, which the state so far has said they are not planning to disrupt distributions of state aid in FY '20. We expect that that will come in as originally projected. So overall, I think, at least for FY '20, we're in good shape. We have been talking to departments about their spending and trying to get them to clear up their encumbrances, their old purchase orders and so forth, and get them off the books. Because if they're not really going to need to buy things by the end of this year, we're asking them to clear those off the books. That, in the overall sense, is the general fund. We have five enterprise funds, the Water and Sewer Fund, and then the Enterprise Funds for Wreck and Rinse, as well as for the Council on Aging and Transportation Fund, and our, excuse me, our fund for counseling youth, known as the AYCC Fund. Those funds, most of them are doing well. There is a lag, we think, in revenue collection in Water and Sewer, but we also are looking very much at trying to keep down our spending there. AYCC funding, they have expended more, they've expended 86% of their budget at this point in the year, but they're also collecting more revenue than they had originally been budgeted. And so Eda and I both think that the AYCC fund will be in good shape. Counselinging and Transportation has only expended 53% of its budget, mostly due to some vacancies there. They've collected 75% of their revenue, and so we think that is in good shape. The one fund that really worries us is the Ed Burns Rinse Fund. We think there is a good chance that there will be a deficit in that fund. To deal with that, so far, we have laid off the part-time workers who work keeping up the rink. The rink has been shut down since March, both for mechanical issues and because we just couldn't operate it because of the quarantine restrictions. The temporary department head, Bobby Jefferson, has been working with Eda and with Julie Wayman in my office to look at their expenditures and try to keep them down and cancel out any, any purchase orders. Having said that, we do think that there is still a risk that there will be a deficit in that fund. It does not have much of a substantial fund balance. So there may be the need to supplement that with, either supplement it with general fund funds at the end of the year, going to the Finance Committee, or not transfer some things out of that fund that we usually transfer, like health insurance. So we're monitoring that closely, and we'll come to decisions before the end of the year. And then finally, the Recreation Fund has also seen a drop off in its revenue, a drop off in some of its expenses, too. There is a fairly substantial fund balance in that Enterprise Fund. So if the revenue does not meet expenses for the year, and they end up with a deficit, that deficit can be covered by the fund balance in the Recreation Fund. So having said that, again, I would go back to the memo. There's a lot of detail in here about specific, a lot of specific departments and their spending. Much of the explanation of that is consistent with what you've seen in previous reports. So I don't think there are any real major changes. And so at this point, I think, instead of going through it in a lot of detail, I would just stop at this point and ask if any members have any questions or if Eda wants to make any other comments. And for you, here.
Yes, if I could call on our comptroller, Ms. Cody?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone.
Hi. Eda, is there anything you want to add to what I said?
I think you've pretty much covered everything accurately.
Well, that's, that's a bonus. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, with that, unless our town manager indicates otherwise, I'm going to call on Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. You answered most of the questions I had. Does your dirty crystal ball say anything about 2021?
Right now, we are doing a lot of forecasts and what-ifs about 2021. The biggest question is what's going to happen with state aid. We are having a meeting with the Revenue Working Group this week to speak with them in preparation for then calling a Long Range Planning Committee meeting to inform members of that committee of what our findings are. We don't really have any inside information about what the state is going to do. They've been very tight-lipped about it. So that is a big question. The other question is about local receipts. I think that local receipts that are most in danger of falling short are our hotel motel taxes and our meals tax, because we expect there will be a continued period into FY '21 when those things do not come in at their projections. So what to do about that for next year is part of the conversation that we're going to have among ourselves this week and then more publicly after that. I will say, I think, at this point, the biggest question for us is not really what's going to happen in FY '21. The biggest question is going to be how this will affect the next time we need an override. And right now, our projections are, with the numbers that were in the Governor's budget, FY '24 would be the budget year when we would need to have an override by. Some of the projections that I've looked at internally, move that up to FY '23, and a position that I personally think is unacceptable. I think what we're going to try to do is work to make sure we don't have to have an override earlier than FY '24. But a lot of that depends on things that we don't know yet. So that's where we are. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
Thank you very much, and thank you for all of this information. It has been so helpful since we've been getting these quarterly reports to just have a feel for where our fiscal position is. I just have one question, and it's on the snow and ice, which, you know, we had a very light winter, but we're showing 117.2% used. Is that because we typically just make that up on the back end and?
So I think that has to do with probably there are some encumbrances in there for buying things like salt that we haven't, we didn't clear out as of the end of March. So I think that is probably a significant part of that number, and we'll see it align more closely to what we're actually going to need by the end of the year.
So it sits through the chair. So if we do have some of that stockpiled, then presumably that'll be advantageous to next year.
That's also true.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the information. That was very helpful. Just one comment about the Ed Burns Fund. Once we get to the end of the fiscal year and we can resolve that Enterprise Fund, just it'd be a good time, you know, we all that use the rink, hope come September it'll be open and ready to go. But just to make sure we're planning and preparing for, in the event, that's one fund that if this continues, will continue to not generate its revenue. So I just think it's something that we need to look forward to and keep in mind as we're going through the numbers here.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Poehler and Ms. Cody, for the quarterly reports. They have been very helpful. And the question, just for fiscal '21, one of the provisions in Chapter 53 is that the town could adopt a 1/12 budget if we're unable to adopt the budget for fiscal '21. And so much of the work you're doing hinges on having an idea of what state aid will be in fiscal '21. If you're not getting, they call it guidance or an idea of what to use, is there a possibility that there could be a recommendation to go 1/12 until we get a little bit more certainty? Or would you prefer to pass a budget and perhaps adjust during the year?
Adam and I have not talked about the exact timing of that. But I would say, it's my opinion, that the extent that we are able to have a town meeting and pass a budget, that we would do that. If by the time that comes up, we don't have any information from the state about state aid, at that point, I think it might be, at that point, I would maybe recommend going with a 1/12 budget. 1/12 budget means that we have to go forward each month with a budget that is at least 1/12 of the FY '20 budget, and can be more. There are some things that we tend to pay, for example, at the beginning of the year, such as our pension allocation, that I would recommend that we go forward and just pay into the pension fund right up front. It keeps us on track for pension funding and so forth. There are other things in the budget that we have adjusted and added, made recommendations for additions this year. Some of those, I think, I would hold back on before, if we didn't know enough about our state aid. That's all very general, and will depend on what our state aid numbers are. We have been talking within the Finance Group with Eda, with Mike Mason from the School Department, with Phyllis, with Paul Tierney and other staff about what a 1/12 budget would look like. So we will be prepared to put that forward if necessary. I think, again, my preference would be to try to see if it is possible to have a town meeting and go forward with a regular budget at that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapdeline?
Yes, just to really second Sandy's remarks, I would certainly prefer, if it's possible and responsible, to adopt a full year's budget with the potential for coming back in the fall to make adjustments. If there's more information that we're still waiting for. So let's say the state's budget does not come out before July 1st, but we anticipate it coming out over the summer in September, we could adopt a budget with reasonable estimates and then clean it up in the fall. Alternatively, really, our approach wouldn't be entirely dissimilar. If we adopted the 1/12 budget, we would do it in the manner in which Sandy described, but likely come back in the fall also to adopt a full-year budget. So I think these are discussions we'll all be having over the next couple of weeks, leading into June, leading up to town meeting, and determining what the, you know, what's the best risk balance for the community, given what we will know with the time.
Thank you. I have, I think, two questions, or one request. And I love all the detail that's in here and continue to add to it and expand it and customize it. I was wondering if in the future, we could, on top of the Munis report, maybe have sort of like a table of contents of where, like, one of the things, and one of the questions I would ask you, is I wanted to look up, it seems as though everybody is building everywhere, if I watch on Facebook. And I'm just, I was trying to find in here where I would go in terms of whether it's Building Department Inspection Services. And it's because of the way it comes out on my iPad, it's almost impossible to zoom it enough. And I did have the office printed out, so I wasn't able to find that. So if there's any way, just for the 15 or 18 categories, if you could just have like a cover sheet on the front that says, you know, on what page in the, whatever amount of pages this says, usually says, but anyways, if that's possible. And then my second question would be, is it just me? I would go to look to see if what I'm thinking is that a lot of people seem to be building and renovating, which means they're probably pulling building permits. What can you glean out of Munis, or is it everything's projected the way we thought?
So that's a very good question. And it's been very interesting to see that, in fact, you're exactly right. People are pulling building permits. The inspections office has been open. They have a little basket out front where people can drop things, so they're not allowing people to come into the building. But they have been able to process paperwork, and quite a few people have taken out permits. And that revenue, it may be, it's consistent with what it's been over the last few years. So I would say we have not been significantly hurt in any way from a lack of building permits. That construction work does continue.
Okay, no, okay. So whatever, for the next quarter report, you don't necessarily have to do anything luminous, but even if you call and say, you know, you might want to look on page 27 of Munis, because I just want to see how that trends, if that's just sort of an initial thing, if that's going to continue to rise. And I only bring that up to the point when we get to, whether it's the Ed Burns Arena or some other area in town, or decisions around furloughs and layoffs in the future. If that is something that continues to trend up, as I would say, that's a good thing for us to know, because there's a lot of other things that unfortunately are trending down. So I can't see the inside of my screen. I can't, I'm texting my husband. Somehow this calendar says, start your calendar, and I don't know how to shut it down. So if anyone, if any one of my colleagues or the town manager sees that someone, especially my board colleagues are raising their hand, let me know. And if not, I don't think we need a motion for this, do we? No?
Move receipt.
Let's move receipt by Mr. Kuro. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De Corsi. Any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. That's 5-0 unanimous vote. And I want to thank Ms. Cody and Mr. Poehler for, once again, really getting the gist and then some of what the board continues to request and expand upon. And you do it so seamlessly, but I know it's not. So, you know, thank you both for all of your hard work and efforts. It's appreciated.
Our pleasure.
Okay, we will now go to Agenda Item Three, Request Contractor Drain Layer's License. Greener Group LLC out of Lowell, Mass. Usually, they're not here, so I'm going to still assume that's the case.
Move approval, subject to conditions.
Motion by Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kuro. Any further questions and comments? If not, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Kuro. Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. That's, once again, 5-0 vote. Agenda Item Three is closed. We now will go to Agenda Item Four. I have decided, as chair, I did this at the very first meeting that we had Zoom, where we discussed town elections and moving forward. Normally, on individual agenda items, you're either a member of the board or some of the town staff, similar to any corporate structure. You know, people sit around the table and other people come in, you know, that they're to listen. But having said that, and hopefully this doesn't play out last time I did this, I do want to, before I turn it over to the manager, if there are individuals who have brief questions or brief comments constructively, I will take a list and entertain those. But I want to be very cognizant, mindful of the fact that if we start to go down a road, and this is totally my call, that is really not appropriate and on topic. I am going to ask the moderator to unmute that person and one of the moderators, and we'll move on in the list. Because one of the things I'm trying to do better at on my job is, some people have communicated to me in person before March 12, but afterwards, that sometimes they find it difficult watching portions of the Select Board meeting, and they can't watch it anymore. To that, I apologize. We really want to work on that with everybody else, because it really does pain me. I don't want anyone to have those sentiments. So with that, our town manager, Mr. Chapdeline, is going to discuss local elections, plans, and polling locations. This has been a moving target. If you spoke to me up until this morning, there was one smaller version of polling places that I would tell you that was probably the way we were going to go. But then Attorney Heim has had conversations, communications with the Secretary of State's office, the town manager, who's our liaison to the various town departments, members of our Select Board Office, our Assistant Town Manager, Jim Feeney, that I'm going to leave people out. This has been such a moving target, and so many town employees have had to do, in the middle of this pandemic, basically with no policy, procedure, or guidelines on how to put a campaign in in the middle of the coronavirus, and they've really done a great job. So with that, I would like to turn it over with that, I would like to turn it over to our town manager, Mr. Chapdaling.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to provide the board an update on a matter of the mailing of the postcard that we've discussed. I want to ask the board to consider and approve some slightly modified polling locations for the June 6th election and then give an update on the work that's still to be done. So the matter of the postcard, which was discussed at last week's board meeting, as well as during a listening session on last Wednesday evening, we have cleared up one of the items that was a major question at the listening session, and that was whether or not the request for people to list their date of birth on the return postcard was necessary. We have cleared that up and we will be removing the date of birth line from the postcard. So that should allay the concerns of those who raised those concerns last Wednesday. And we've also, in cooperation with the Health and Human Services Department, who consulted with Arlington Eats and the Council on Aging, in terms of the languages that they recommend, we try to put on the postcard simply saying important, please translate, based on the vulnerable populations they work with that speak languages other than English. And those five languages, again, identified by Arlington Eats and the Council on Aging, are Mandarin, Spanish, French, Russian and Portuguese. So we will be putting, again, the translation for important, please translate on this postcard for those five languages. And in consultation with the clerk's office, it's my understanding that we should be able to get this postcard mailed later this week. So by the end of this week, that postcard should go out and residents, registered voters can expect to start seeing that postcard, hopefully by the end of this week, if not, early next week. I do want to point out, it was brought to my attention just before the meeting, there was a campaign mailing that went out that has caused some consternation in that it appears to be from the town. And I just want to make clear that it was not from the town. It was not this postcard, so you've not missed the postcard. If that's what you're looking for, the postcard will be going out later this week. Moving from the postcard, I want to talk about the polling locations. So we were trying to balance having safe, from a public health point of view, polling locations, while also being able to staff those polling locations, given concerns about having having enough poll workers, but also having too many people in one room if we had fully staffed polls. So we're recommending to the board tonight a reduction down to eight polling locations, primarily using the elementary schools, but also using town hall. And what I'd like to do is just read off what we're proposing in terms of polling locations. And I'll go in, they're not in exact order, but starting with one. We have one, three and five proposed for the Thompson School at 187 Everett Street, two, four and six at the Hardy School, which is located at 52 Lake Street, seven, eight and 10 at Town Hall, 730 Massachusetts Avenue, precincts nine and 11 at the Bishop School, located at 25 Columbia Road, precincts 12 and 14 at the Bracket School, located at 66 Eastern Avenue, precincts 13 and 15 at the Stratton School, located at 180 Mountain Avenue, precincts 16, 18 and 20, located at the Dallin School at 185 Florence Ave, and precincts 17, 19 and 21 at the Pierce School, located at 85 Park Ave Extension. So statute requires that for any polling location changes, the town send out a postcard, an additional postcard for the voters who have had their location changed. So for all those changed under this new strategy that we're proposing tonight, a postcard will be sent out, and I believe that's managed by the select board staff in the upcoming weeks. So that will be another another mailing going out by the town. So again, we firmly know we'll be mailing the postcard. We're asking for board approval of these polling locations tonight. And then in terms of the work we're going to do going forward, we want to place and locate at least one, possibly more drop boxes for the safe return of ballots for those who are not able to place a stamp and put the ballots to return to the town back in the mail. We're going to work on further signage and outreach in different locations in town, calling people's attention to the to the election and its date and how to get a ballot. And we're also going to be continually working on how to make sure the polling places can be as safe as possible. Facilities is already ordering Plexiglas shields to keep poll workers safe, as well as voters safe in their interactions with poll workers. But we'll be doing more work to make sure that we lay out the facilities as appropriate. We'll also be working to identify enough poll workers for the day. And if we go through the list of existing poll workers and need more, I know I've talked about recruiting existing town employees. And it's also been suggested to me that we could potentially look to college students who are home from school, who might also be willing to be trained and work the polls. So we'll be looking at all those options. With that, I think that's all I wanted to offer tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, and I'm going to start with my colleagues on the board. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chapdaling, for that update and and for the forum last week. I did, Jim O'Connor had moderated that forum on the election. And there's some questions that came out of that that you've addressed tonight, namely on the postcard. So thank you for that. And as we said all along, we're trying to to get through this and put this election together with the locations and with access to the ballot as best we can. So from what it sounds like, the three precincts that will be receiving postcards are precincts seven, nine and 20, is that right? If you if you voted at Chestnut Manor or at the Park Ave Congregational Church, you'll be voting at a different location this time.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So so that's that's good. And then on the on the poll workers, just a question, Madam Chair. To the extent that we need poll workers, do we need to appoint them at our next meeting or appoint them during one of our meetings before the election?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then the last thing I want to say, and this is a follow up on on the postcard. And I know there's been a lot of discussion around town. There's a lot of discussion at the forum last week and people concerned about just various concerns about the postcard and receiving it and sending it back. And and I just want to point out if you're concerned about whether you're going to get the postcard or waiting or getting it back, you can still complete the early ballot application or an absentee ballot application and send it back to the clerk's office either by email or by fax. And I think there will be a location later, as the manager said. This is the the early ballot application is on the Secretary of State's website. There's a link to it on the clerk's website. It's a one pager, but to the extent there are people out there that are going to be waiting for the postcard and they can print out the ballot and email it back, go right ahead and do it, because that will that that will entitle you to the to the early ballot and, you know, perhaps save some time in terms of that turnaround later. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi. And before I call my colleague, do we know or can we find out? And we can discuss it tomorrow, the next day. I know we have a meeting scheduled, a regularly scheduled meeting for May 18th. It sounds like we're going to have to do some outreach in terms of poll workers. And what is the very last day in May? Is it a week before the elections or two weeks? Because if that's the case, we may have to we may get 75% at that 18th meeting. And if we get a few more after that, we may have to have a special emergency meeting. So we can discuss that tomorrow, the next day going forward. So with that, Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. And thank you, town manager and everyone that's been working on this. The I viewed the election forum the other day, and I think everything, all the issues that were proposed have been addressed. I think the main thing was the the postcard, which I think is in good shape and again, making it easy for our citizens to get the postcard back. So thank you for your efforts on that. On the locations, you know, I think this looks good. You know, I think everyone had anticipated the Chestnut Manor, an elderly building couldn't house elections. And then Park Ave Congregational has a lower voter turnout than other locations. So I think this, these locations make sense. Just some food for thought for, because I know over the years, voting locations has been a hot topic. Is that I participated in the poll in the election forum the other day, and I was one of the five participants out of the 78 people polled that said I was going to vote in person. So it looks like we are going to have a lot of people who are doing the vote by mail. That's not to say we don't have to be prepared at the locations and make sure that everything, every is operating safely and safely for both the voters and the poll workers. And then I just want to reiterate my comment last time. I think one of the main safety features at the polling location is just to try to set it up. So there's an entrance and an exit and people go through the location in a line, so they're not people exiting aren't passing by the people that are entering. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think to Mr. Hurd's point, you know, I know that we as a town, we can't really tell people whether to do the mail-in vote or in-person voting. Somebody asked me my opinion, though. I'm going to advise, you know, take advantage of the mail-in voting. And because we'd like to keep down numbers at the polls. The forum was excellent. I think we had, what, over 100 people who were who were on LinkedIn through Zoom, and I know there would have been more watching. My understanding is that the staffing profile is going to be reduced at each of the polls, correct?
Madam Chair, so right now, we've learned that we can have a minimum of one person that I check in, wanted to check out. So two checkers or two inspectors. And we could have as many as one warden for up to five precincts. Obviously, there's not going to be five precincts at the same location, so we won't have that ratio. I've been talking with a few of the experienced wardens who would like to see one warden per precinct because of the important role that wardens play. And I appreciate that, and I think it's a worthy goal. What I've said to them thus far is that we will try to do that. But we want to make, see how many wardens are willing to say yes, or potentially even clerks might say yes, who would be promoted to warden. So we are going to be going with a reduced profile. The exact scope of that profile, we're still working on.
Okay. And I don't know, Madam Chair, if you know, or if the manager knows, you know, where we're at with the recruitment, how close are we to to having what we need to staff this number of polling places?
Yes, like I am not able to give you a fully informed answer tonight. I've been talking to the select board staff, and I know they've been making the phone calls. The the general sense they've given me is that there's a pretty significant number of poll workers who are not not comfortable coming to work. So I don't have a count for you from them, but I know they're working on it. And I've told them that I'd like for this week to be the week we really focus on knowing where we stand in that regard.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Chair, through you just once more, the manager, I just want to acknowledge that this is not really in your job description to be handling the organization of of the elections. But this is a really extraordinary time, not only because of the pandemic, but we have some other factors that make this an extraordinary time right now. And so I just want to publicly thank you for all of the work that you put into it. And I have to admit that when we appointed you as the liaison in this task, it had actually slipped my mind that your first municipal position was actually running an elections operation. So I already knew we had the right guy on it, but but I was happy when I remembered that fact as well. So thank you. But I think we can probably all promise that this isn't going to happen every year and every election, because that this is kind of an extraordinary assignment. So thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I call Mr. Dunn, as of Friday, when the plan was, when I was contacting with Marie Kapelker in the select board office, we were going to have hoping to possibly have three voting locations, which meant 47 to 49 employees. We were all set for that. So but obviously now it's gone from three back to eight. So so I know there's been at least 47 to 49 employees identified, but that's about a third of what we need. Mr. Dunn?
At risk of repeating people before me, I'm really happy with the plan. I'm really happy with the the choice of polling locations. I think that the postcard is an excellent innovation to manage the accessibility issues created by the coronavirus. And I also, and I really appreciate the town manager stepping in and handling that innovation. And I guess I'm gathering now that he's also picking up some of the stuff that might traditionally be more in the select board's office or the town clerk's office. And I really appreciate that he's doing that in this time of need. And I agree that we shouldn't, let's do it, because it's going to, it's the right way to get it done, but let's not make it the precedent for for the future. But that doesn't mean, don't, I'm going to take it and I'm going to say thank you, because I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Besides everything that I've spoken to, Mr. Chapdaling, Attorney Heim, all the past couple of weeks, something I'd like to put forth through the town manager, you, Mr. Chapdaling, is and I know there's some framework already in place for this, but in terms of somebody, it may just be email contact with John Griffin and sort of provide a, you know, premier, brief discussion of what, description of what we discussed here tonight. So whatever way, because he's been very good, John Griffin over at the Housing Authority of keeping people out of that building and keeping our seniors residents in there safe. It's amazing. I don't want to jinx it if I say too many things. So I was thinking I would leave it to our liaison, Mr. Chapdaling, to reach out to or direct on to Mr. Griffin, to Pam Hallett with the Housing Corps. And then, sure, this part's already being done in terms of any proper information dissemination through Christine Shaw, Council on Aging and all of that. And what I would say is me, you know, five dimes and 10 nickels make a dollar if there's, you know, any postcards that well, they shouldn't be left over. So that won't happen, because they're going to be sent to the registered voters. But just so they can notify, however they notify those populations to this information here. Because I know a lot of them, you know, they still have the original flip phone and, you know, sometimes don't even use that. And there's nothing wrong with that. So what I will do now, again, I'm breaking, I'm sorry, town manager, Mr. Chapdaling?
Sorry, I just want to very quickly say I really appreciate the board's expression of thanks, but I do want to make clear, you know, total team effort. Doug, town council, if I've been the coach, he's been the star quarterback. The clerk's office, Jim Feeny, Christine Barjono, the select board office, we've been working together a lot. And it's really, it's really actually been very gratifying, working with all these folks, working so hard to make this all happen. So I wanted to make, just make that clear, that I, I, makes me feel good to get the thanks, but I want to spread it around as well. So, thank you.
A little love. Okay, now, if there's anyone who has brief questions or comments, I'll give it like 30 seconds and then ask for the list and just the same ground rules that we always operate by in terms of posing your remarks and or questions. Okay, Mr. Chapdaling?
So there's, so for anybody who wants to say anything, you could use the raise hand feature. And right now, Makia Healy has her hand raised.
Okay. I will call on Makia and then maybe I'll give it one more shot to see if anybody else. Ms. Healy? Ms. Healy?
You should pop in any second here. I've just promoted her to panelist. Let's see.
Hi there. Wow, I can't believe I'm first. I have just what, one question about whether, there has been conversation about whether hours will be reduced for polling and I just wanted to see if you could just clarify to make sure that they will be the regular hours, because the least disruption to this process, the better. So if we can keep that the same, that would be great. Just if you can clarify that for for all of us. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is I would just encourage that we have more than one drop box, secure drop ballot place. Maybe one in East Arlington in the center and the heights, just for people who get around primarily by foot. If you don't have vehicles, people who are in chronic pain, like the easier way to deposit those ballots, the better. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Makia. Mr. Chapdaling?
So I would say, you know, there is no intention to change the hours. That would be the normal reasonable election hours for the polling locations. And we will, we'll certainly look at multiple drop boxes. I think it's a reasonable I think it's a reasonable request and we'll, we will take a look at it and what, what decisions we make will, will publicize as widely as possible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's waving or?
So I, Town Council had his hand raised. I'm not sure if that was intentional or not, but.
Attorney Heim?
I just wanted to make sure consistent with, thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make sure consistent with what we'd spoken about before. We try to figure out some way of letting folks who might be dialing in by phone to see if they have anything they want to offer in terms of public comment.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Heim. I forgot to include that at the beginning and I should have.
Yeah, I do believe that if someone's on a phone line and they dial star nine, it will show their hand is raised.
Okay, first, and I'll check back one last time. I'd like to entertain a motion by one of my colleagues to vote the aforementioned polling locations for the June sixth, twenty twenty election. Is there a motion to move approval?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kuro. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hurd. Anyone else? Mr. Chaplaine, that? If not, I'll.
There are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so barring any questions or comments by my colleagues on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim, roll call please.
Mr. Nacorsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes, and that's a unanimous vote. Agenda item four is closed. Mr. Chaplaine, for agenda item five, was that a time certain that Ms. Rate was going to join us? Should I take it now or move on and come back?
Ms. Rate and Ms. Warko are both with us, so I can promote them to panelists when you're ready.
Okay, so we'll go right into agenda item five, CDBGCV CARES Act Funding Plan Discussion of Invote to Support Program Year Forty-Five Plan Amendment. Along with town staff and our three citizens, our three residents who are also on the CDBG Committee, myself and Mr. Dunn are also members who met for the CARES Act CV as well as two other appropriations of funds. Mr. Dunn, is there anything before I move into the heart of the matter?
Nope.
Okay, and I just wanted to say that I want to thank Ms. Rate and Ms. Warko. Again, you know, in the middle of a pandemic crisis, you know, pulling together a Zoom meeting with, I don't know how many of us, something team, as well as all the work they had to do beforehand to come up with funding suggestions and making sure things were appropriate and fell under categories that could be applied to this as well as really being very flexible with the subcommittee when we had discussion about a few items and sort of tweaking them, you know, revising, adding to. And again, they got that right back to keep this on schedule. So I really do appreciate a lot of our town employees. I think that we're working more than forty hours a week and definitely more than five days a week. But with that, I'm going to start with you, Mr. Chaplaine.
That, that was a great introduction. So I think I'll turn it right over to Jenny, or if Jenny wants Erin to lead to describe the discussion that was had at the CDBG Subcommittee and what's being proposed for the CARES Act funding.
Great. Thank you, Adam. This is Jenny Raiden, the Director of Planning and Community Development for the town. And can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
There are two matters that are before you in relation to this agenda item. I have provided you with the CDBG Subcommittee Meeting Minutes. The committee met on April fifteenth. And essentially the summary of that meeting led to the development of the, and the refinement of the substantial amendment. That's also before you tonight. I've also provided you with the CARES Act memo that came from HUD directly to Ms. Mahan, which notes that we will, we anticipate receiving six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and three dollars in addition to our regular allocation in community development block grant funds. The town receives about a million dollars annually, as well as some program income that we work to appropriate every single year. This was obviously an expedited process. Really appreciate the time and energy of the, the subcommittee who met to discuss this. Of course, they met previously to review applications earlier this year, as well as part of their regular schedule. But this was an additional lift for them, so I appreciated that. As well as the input that we received from a number of people in the community who had comments or questions or new ideas and suggestions for the use of the funding. There are two things that are related to this agenda item that I just want to make sure are clear. The first one is that we provided you with an amendment to the Citizen Participation Plan, which is the very last page of that document. It's page seven to me, but it might be different in different packets, which adds language that allows for during an emergency, we will be able to grant any waivers that are provided to us by HUD. In this particular case, there are actually a number of waivers that relate to the execution and implementation of the CARES funding, including being able to spend more money on public services than we usually can. And then also in particular, the Citizen Participation Plan allows for an expedited review process that we will then be able to, you know, get the money sooner and get it to people in need as soon as possible, which is what HUD is looking for us to do. Because we want to try to move the funding as quickly as possible in relationship to the pandemic, which is the sole purpose of funding. And so with that, that's, that's part one. So we do need to amend the plan. The second part, of course, is what we are actually doing with the funding. And the substantial amendment covers three categories. And at, at the end, if you have questions that are more technical in nature, Erin Swarko, the Assistant Director, who's also serving as the interim Community Development Program Manager, can answer some of those more technical questions, should anybody have them. But the three parts of the funding would cover a substantial, a significant amount of funding towards rental assistance. And the first part of the rental assistance program is that we, we designed the program initially, we thought that it would be for four thousand dollars per household. The subcommittee chose to move that number to two thousand dollars, which would enable us to serve more households. We project it could serve at least sixty-six households. And it would cover at least two thousand dollars a month and be covered for a total number of three months for every single household who qualifies. And these would be low or moderate income households who would have to qualify for the program. It would be, it would not be administered by the town, as in the Department of Planning and Community Development, but it could be administered by Housing Corporation of Arlington or another agency that regularly provides funds in terms of rental assistance to eligible households. So that's part one. Part two is a, an emergency micro enterprise business assistance program. This actually builds off of the program year, the next program year's funding that we had already appropriated and allows for an addition of two hundred thousand dollars. That would be available to a number of businesses. Again, we're, we're projecting here, but we think that it would at least cover twenty micro enterprises. A micro enterprise in this case is a, a business that employs five or fewer employees with the, one of them has to be the owner of the business. And that they have to have the low mod income designation that has to be part of the, the eligible activity for community development block grant funding. So at least ten thousand dollars would be provided and again, up to twenty micro enterprises. The last part of the planned substantial amendment to allocate these funds would go to public service agencies. Only the difference would be that we would be covering public service agencies who are specifically working on issues related to the pandemic, related to COVID nineteen. And so what we've suggested here is that it would be anything for housing, basic needs, or not, I'm sorry, basic needs other than housing, including other household expenses, food security, mental health counseling, childcare, transportation and senior support. We estimate that we could support four hundred low to moderate income clients. And that's in addition to those, that twelve hundred dollar, twelve hundred percent number that's already anticipated in this program year. In terms of commentary on this particular, particular item, we received some feedback about potentially providing support on technology support so that people can more easily participate in events, have technology access to participate in meetings like this. We understand that the Council on Aging is potentially interested in pursuing such a program. And we would also hope that potentially there will be applicants who might serve children, school-aged children, who also could more readily participate in school or town activities electronically, but that who do not currently have access to that technology. So, so that's maybe an addition to that particular program. We also received some feedback on the Rental Assistance Program, which is that potentially we might want to add some discretion to the program. But if a household needs more than two thousand dollars per month, it's at the discretion of the program to potentially fund more per month. And that does align with potentially some average rents that are out there and we might want to consider that as well. So I think in sum, that, that outlines the substantial amendment. We are also reprogramming some money, which goes, will go to rental assistance. That's coming from the current FY nineteen program year. As I mentioned, we're in the middle of the comment period. It actually closes in two days. And I'm glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one point of clarification. It's my memory and maybe it's, it's not in the minutes. So maybe I'm not recon exactly, but I know when we were talking, especially around the four thousand going to two thousand allocation. And Mr. Dunn can refresh my memory if I'm correct or not. But I remember having conversation and I seem to remember the citizen residents and I believe Mr. Dunn, but I'll let him speak to himself, that we didn't indicate this would be low to moderate. We just wanted it to be low income in terms of the renters relief. But Mr. Dunn, could you, is my memory faulty?
As in low only versus low to moderate?
Yes, because the point that I made was that trying to reach as many people as possible, people who are hurting the most. If, if it was low to moderate, the people who are on the low end, obviously paying lower rents. The people who are in moderate part would automatically use up to two thousand. And my rationale was if it was just offered for low income, I'm, I'm confident would reach more people because I don't think, you know, if you're low income in terms of your socioeconomic status, I doubt anybody's over two thousand dollars and the vast majority are probably not even up to two thousand. But I, I thought, I thought we were in agreement with that, that this, we would offer this just to low income.
I do remember that line of conversation. I remember being a lot more fixated on the four to two, and I don't remember how that one turned out.
Okay, because I, I know the citizen residents, that's how I thought it would be put forward. So I guess what I would say to my colleagues and does Mr. Chaplaine also vote on this? Yes, okay. Everything that Ms. Rate has presented, I would agree with. It, but I would just ask one of my colleagues if they feel so inclined to, for the up to two thousand dollars a month program that that's offered to low income renters only. So, but we'll move forward. Mr. Chaplaine?
Could I, could I suggest an approach that's similar to what Ms. Rate mentioned in terms of the, giving the program administrators some flexibility that we start with a priority for those that are just low income? But that if there are not sufficient applicants with those eligibility criteria, that they be allowed to expand to those qualifying with moderate income?
You know why? I'll say why I don't want to do that. And again, I'll leave it to my colleagues and the town manager is in trying to, if it's low moderate versus if it's just low, if it's just low income, the, the town planning department, whoever, are going to have to sort of go, it's not going to just be a blast. You know, go on the town website, you've learned about this program, which people who are in moderate and higher incomes are used to probably checking once or twice a week. I think the way the program in, in an effort to reach more people who really need it, and I don't even think, think we have close to enough in terms of people who fall in the low income category. If, if it's just to them, I think it will really guide sort of our outreach and, and sort of focus us on the mission of, you know, whether it's working with the food bank, I mean, Arlington Needs Food Bank, Council on Aging, to get the message out to those people who are low income, who may not be, have the technology. They may be savvy enough, but they don't have it. My fear is having it low to moderate, it's going to get scooped up. We're not going to reach who we want, who's hurting the most right now. Okay, so that's something to ponder. So with that, unless Ms. Rate, if there's anything else I should, you wanted to add, I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, just clarified low, moderate income in HUD world. Low income is fifty percent of the area median income. So for example, that would be if you're a single person living by yourself, you would not be able to earn, you'd have to earn at or below forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for your household. A two-person household is forty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Three-person, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. But fifty percent is categorized as low income, moderate income is eighty percent area median income. And that is, for example, for a one-person household, sixty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Two-person, seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. So just, just to give you some of the benchmarks. So if you want it to be low income, would you be saying fifty percent area median income is that? Just so I have the, I, I can put that into the amendment?
Yes. And now, some people, they may say, boy, you know, nobody lives on that amount of money here in Arlington. Some of those amounts sounded pretty rich, if you were considered in low income. But anyways, sorry, project kidding me coming out. Trying to change the order, Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, yeah, just, just, just thank you very much for the presentation. I think it's so important that we get this, this assistance out right now. We're going to have a lot of challenges in town once, once the cloud lifts on this. And there are a lot of, the, the, the cloud isn't going to lift for some time on, on some of the populations we're trying to serve here. I, just looking for some clarification, Madam Chair, what you're suggesting. This is just for the tenant assistance program that you're, 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 you're talking about?
Correct, just that.
Just that, that one, okay.
The renters relief program, whatever you want to call it. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my question on the small business grant program, two hundred thousand, the goal outcome is twenty new low or moderate clients. Are you expecting that these are all going to be ten thousand dollar grants? Or are there some criteria that'll be put forward to, to determine the grant amount?
I think.
I suppose that goes for everything here.
No, I think I know the answer, but the person with the best knowledge would be Ms. Rate.
I, I'm happy to answer that question, Mr. Kuro. The, the criteria would be set that it would be up to ten thousand dollars, continued upon a review of the application and the needs, the justification for how the funds will be used. But we would anticipate that if we expended ten thousand dollars per business, then obviously it would only serve twenty. But I think that it might range and I think we might be able to reach more people potentially. However, there are probably many, many of these smaller entities that are very much in need right now. And so that ten thousand dollars as a grant would be a big source of relief.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And my only other question is, do we think that, I mean, I've always been a fan of the homelessness prevention program, HCA. But do we think that, that, that the expenditure of those funds might be slightly delayed because of the, the, the current moratorium on evictions?
Ms. Rate?
I don't have a sense that the money would be delayed. And there are resources and funding that could potentially go towards emergency assistance, which that organization and others might have access to. So I don't think that there will be a delay in getting the funding out.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, just a question on the small business grant program. Are we required to limit to businesses with five or less employees per HUD guidelines? Is that why that's on there?
Ms. Rate?
Yes, we are. That's the definition of micro enterprise.
Okay, because I mean, I think what comes to mind for Arlington and small businesses in need right now are restaurants, which generally would have more than five employees. So, I mean, it is what it is. If we're limited and we, there's nothing we can do about it, but it's a shame. If we're limited and there's nothing we can do about it, but it's a shame. I think some of those are some of the businesses that could benefit most from this.
Any follow-up, Ms. Ray?
No, I understand that comment very well. And I will just note that business is a broad category. So it could also be organizations, nonprofits. It could be, there could be a range of potential applicants. We'll be putting out those guidelines and the criteria after we're finished with the plan amendment and the HUD review.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions. I first want to commend Ms. Warko for the Bruce Springsteen, Clarence Clemons background behind her there. I have a question on the tenant assistance program. You'd mentioned that it will be an outside program administrator. What's the mechanism for how that would work in terms of how the tenants are selected and how the administrator is selected?
Ms. Ray?
Actually, I'll let Erin take that, address that question. She's been working very hard on figuring out the mechanics of the program, if you would, please.
Definitely. Ms. Warko?
Hi, thank you. It's my husband's poster. But yes, I appreciate that. So in the, so we would plan on doing an emergency procurement to find an agency or agencies that would have the ability and the experience in providing this type of administration. There are a number of those agencies that are in the greater Boston area that hopefully we can draw upon. So as part of that procurement, we would have specific requirements of that agency that they would have to meet in order to be considered for, to be our administrator of the program. So that would be the means as to which we select the agency or agencies as part of that oversight and part of our program design. We would have the guidelines that the agency or agencies would have to follow. That would include the eligibility requirements, the, how the money is dispersed. These funds do not go to the tenant directly. They actually get paid to the landlord directly. We'd also have requirements on how to determine if there's a duplication of benefits, which is a concern of HUDs at this time, due to the amount of funding that is out there and available. So we wouldn't, the staff in the department would maintain oversight over the program, but relying really on the agency or agency to do the day-to-day assessment of applicants and following the guidelines that we've set forward. I hope that answers the question.
No, it does. Thank you. And I just want to thank both of you for all the work this year on CDBG. Because I know in addition to the regular grants, we have this reprogramming. I think there may be one more amendment for prior year that may be before us shortly. So thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi. And Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Jenny or Erin, if we go with the low income on the rental, and we don't get sufficient applicants to expend the funds, would we get a chance to modify the policy in the future, and how would that work?
Ms. Ray?
I think it would be best to have some flexibility with the policy now, rather than have to amend the plan with HUD in the future, which would have to go through an amendment process, a review process. So I think the preference would be that we, well, we are able to put out the funding the way that we've already outlined. And if there is funding that's still available, I would suggest that we then perhaps raise the cap to 80% or perhaps 60% or some other number that might feel more comfortable to the board to allow us to be able to continue to utilize the funding. My guess, though, is that we will actually see a number of people apply, and that we won't have any problem having people apply for assistance.
Yeah, I guess I didn't understand the answer. If we choose to go with low, and it isn't full, it isn't filled, what's the process and the timeline by which we would amend it?
We would have to go through the same amendment process that we're going through right now. Repost, sorry, Madam Chair, is it?
Yes, Ms. Ray, I'm sorry.
We would have to go through the same amendment process, which could potentially be three to four weeks of a review, an amendment to the plan, a public review, a submission to HUD, and an approval, and then be able to put the funds back out again. So it would have to go through a plan amendment process because we would be changing the policy and the design of the program.
Thank you. So, but, so, big picture, really, I'm very happy with the work that the group has done. I mean, I was part of it, and I, you know, was happy to participate. And I think, and I'm actually, I appreciate the assistance from the federal government. I think that this is money that we're going to be able to put to work pretty quickly. On the very specific issue of the criteria for the rental assistance, Madam Chair, I understand what you're, I understand the preference for low, and I can go along with it. But I would, I'm really hesitant to write something into the document now. We'd have to go change, I would rather write it as a preference and give, leave the flexibility in with the administrator if necessary.
If I could, through your question, Mr. Dunn, ask Ms. Ray, did I just hear in your remarks that with just a low-income designation, that, I don't know if you said you were confident or some other word, that there wouldn't be any money just left in that fund? I may have misheard you.
No, that is what I said. I believe that we will have enough people apply. You could also, however, in recognizing what Mr. Dunn is suggesting, you could also say that there would be priority given to households that are earning at or below 50% of the area median income. And then that would enable us to, in the event that we do not have enough applicants in that pool, be able to go to the next group of households at slightly higher incomes. But I do think that we will have enough applicants.
Okay, and again, I just would say to Mr. Dunn and my colleagues, you know, having lived in this world, when you see something like this, a lot of the times, the people who really need to reach, get this money, when there's a hurdle like low moderate, sometimes things don't, not all the times, but sometimes things really don't work out the way I think a program might have been intended. I think if we just keep it just on this, and I know the three citizens agreed with this part. They felt very strongly about this also, that make the 4,000, Mr. Dunn made the motion to 2,000, and that we keep this open to low income. And if I could ask Ms. Ray, am I correct in what I've been reading in terms of future federal stimulus fundings, whether through CARES Act or something else, that it's anticipated that we may be receiving in the short term additional monies, whether through another CARES Act or federal stimulus? Or am I misreading the information that's coming out? Ms. Ray?
It's very possible that Arlington will receive additional funding through the CARES Act, through this program and potentially through other, in other resources down the line.
Right, and we discussed that at the subcommittee meeting and said that, to the citizens that were there, we kind of gave them a heads up. You know, you may be coming back again sooner rather than later. The select board members may change, but the rest of the subcommittee would not. And so to Mr. Dunn's point, I would say that if we got to that point in our Ms. Ray's statement, that, you know, she's confident there's more than enough. This is just low income. To me, it's not even enough if we limit it to low income. Plus, we have, from everything that I'm reading, coming out of the Hill, and Ms. Ray, and Mr. Chaplaine, and others, and Mrs. Warko, I anticipate myself, perhaps within the next two, three months, some similar funding to what we're discussing right now. So I would say to that, if what came out that Ms. Ray and the planning department said, well, you know, all the money did go to low income, but boy, did we really have to, you know, go out and find the audience. Maybe that's something that could be addressed with the second round of funding. But for all the reasons that I've stated, I'd like to keep it low-income programs that way. It gives everybody a little extra, including myself and members of the board, to reach those residents, or when they contact us and say, you know, what about me? So I'll see how my colleagues feel on that. So with that, this is a public hearing, you're right, Jenny? Do I have to have, not have to, but am I supposed to have public comment on this?
It's not a public hearing, but you are, of course, welcome to have comments received. It is a comment period. And so we will, we are continuing to accept comments and writing by phone. Any other mechanism, it's acceptable.
Okay, let me just make sure, if any of my colleagues, Mr. Hurd, did you have?
I was just going to add to what you said, that where the number is, this program will serve about 66 households, correct, Ms. Ray, if I'm reading that?
Yes.
In the numbers that we've seen for low income, I'm confident that that will be filled by 66 low-income households in the town. And I think it's an acceptable risk to make sure that those people get the assistance they need over the next tier of residents. And, you know, we never, we would never want a situation when these funds come in and don't get utilized. But like I said, I think that's an acceptable risk to make sure that the funds are going to those who most need them.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And I just want to let everyone know, the reason I'm trying to put everybody's name and/or position when we recognize them is under the executive order. There's language in there to do that for the meeting, as well as anybody who is coming, listening to this meeting by phone and is not using a laptop video computer, as well as in terms of taking proper minutes. Sometimes voices, we pretty much know each other's voices, but every now and you don't know. Something could go from there. So if I don't say anything else further from my colleagues, the town manager, I just, it's not a public hearing, but it is public comment. Is there anyone, Mr. Chaplaine, if there's anyone out there that wanted to have any brief remarks or questions about the CDBG CARES Act funding?
So I did see Mr. Dunn raise his hand, but I also have a raised hand from a phone call participant. So I don't know their name, but I can't allow them to speak.
Yes, please. Let me know when they're on.
But they should be able to speak now.
Hi, this is Makaya. Sorry, I'm having internet problems. So I called in with my phone. I, my question is, I can't see your faces. Can you hear me?
That's okay. No, just say your full name, just for the record. Sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Makaya Healy. I'm at Howard Street. And my comment is, you know, to underscore Diane's point, I do think that it's important to prioritize our low-income residents, as I think everybody is in agreement on, because they're the ones that are hurting the most and don't have the most, they don't have a lot of cushions to fall back on. So I appreciate that. Just the emphasis on needing to make sure that those residents get the most support as possible. I think a piece of that has to do with how we're communicating and to whom we're communicating to. I looked at some census information, and it looks like we have 7,500 residents that are renters. I don't know how accurate that is. That's from the US Census data. And I know a bunch of renters are probably a part of the, you know, the AHA or the Housing Corp. But I'm just wondering if that could be communicated. It doesn't have to be tonight, obviously, but just be, just communicate how we're getting the message out that these grants are available. Assuming that it'll go through the town website, but just if other thoughts have been given to that, I would love to hear what Jenny and Erin have been working on. And thank you so much for all the work that you're doing on this. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. I know it's a public comment, and Ms. Ray is the purveyor, overseer of public comment. I know you've heard Ms. Healy's remarks, Makaya's remarks. Is there anything you wanted to say briefly in response to that, or?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Mahan. The first thing I will just say is that, yes, there are approximately 7,500 renters from the last, based on more recent data. That figure might be a little bit higher. But 45% of those renter households are earning less than 80% of the area median income. And 65% are actually spending more than 30% of monthly income on rent. And so, you know, there is, there is a great risk of potential displacement. And so I do think focusing on lower incomes makes a great deal of sense in that regard. In terms of getting the message out, we are working on a Fair Housing Action Plan and have been in contact with numerous groups and committees and the commissions of the town that are part of, that will be part of that process, as well as social service agencies, housing providers, et cetera. So we have, Erin really, has a long list of agencies and entities, and even individuals who can help us to spread the message and get the word out so that people are aware of this opportunity. We also have had feedback about potentially sending these messages out in various languages. I think we will definitely look into how we can do that or ensure that any sub-recipient of funds can help to ensure that the message is received in any language as appropriate, so that as many people can hear it. Of course, we will take the usual town channels through social media, town notices, the website, and our traditional email list. But we do have other, more specialized lists for other engagement that we are partnering. I'm open to other suggestions, of course, in terms of how to make sure as many people are aware of this as possible.
And taking you up on that offer, I don't know if it's allowed. So I put it before Ms. Ray. We do have a newly formed chapter, and I have been promoting this to people, and I'm surprised by how many people in Arlington were aware of this particular group. There's the OX chapter of RIM, the Registry of Interfaith Ministries. And we just started a, it's a, it's a program. Sherry Baron is affiliated with it. She gave me a lot of information on it. It's the immigrant families here in Arlington. It's called OX because it's A-R for Arlington, C for Cambridge, big C, S for Somerville. I don't know if it's appropriate, but if the planning department could look at, I don't want to offer something that people can't take advantage of, but these certainly are people that, you know, refugees who left their country, some in fear of their life. And, you know, they come over here, and sometimes I heard stories, they can't work for six months. They have to wait. And we just started this new chapter. So if, Ms. Ray, if you could maybe reach out to that group, the person who runs it, I know lives on Egerton Road, and I can't think of her name right now. And I don't think it would be a large number of people here in Arlington, but that's definitely also a needy group. So I'll leave that with you, Ms. Ray.
Okay, I will follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to, as I hear anything else, ask my colleagues to put forth a motion between, to the board, select board and town manager for the CDBG CARES Act Plan amended, and then three different allocations previously described. And if anyone has any change to the language on the low income versus low moderate, I'll leave that to, who would like to make the motion? Who does? I'm sorry.
Mr. Dunn?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
I would like to move approval to the amendment as written in all regards, with the exception of adjusting it to the rental program to be aimed at low income as opposed to low moderate.
Is there a second to Mr. Dunn's motion? Mr. Hurd, just want to check with Ms. Ray and Mr. Chaplaine if we're all set in accordance with this? Ms. Ray?
Just one other, the plan, the Citizen Participation Plan Amendment. Just one other, the plan, the citizen participation plan amendment needs to be also moved.
Okay, uh, ju- do you need two separate votes, or can we just do it all in one fell swoop?
One of the votes specific to the plan, that the citizen participation plan is different than the substantial plan amendment.
Okay, so two separate ones, alright. Um, any further comment on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Heard? Uh, motion that the select board and town manager need to approve, Attorney Heim, roll call?
Chaplain?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. Uh, that's a unanimous vote regarding the um, funding recommendation from CDBG as amended by Mr. Dunn regarding the CARES Act allocation, and we now will take a, I'll entertain a second motion regarding uh, approval and establishment of the citizen part participation facet. Uh, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the modification of the emergency and other situation for the citizen participation plan.
Motion by Mr. Dunn, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Kuro, and then I heard Mr. Heard too, but I'm trying to move it around a little, um. Is there any question or comments by my colleagues, um, uh, seeing Ms. Rate and Mr. Chaplain? It looks like we're set for a vote, so uh, vote by the select board and the town manager, roll call, please Attorney Heim?
Mr. Chaplain?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That is a six-zero vote, agenda item five is closed. We will now go to agenda item six for approval, creation of an Arlington Economic Development Recovery Task Force. Uh, Mr. Chaplain, our town manager?
So I'm gonna uh, did Ms. Warko adieu and replace her with Ms. Carter from the planning and uh, community development office, so let me just uh, do that. Alright, so Ally should be joining uh, here shortly. So this was an idea that was brought forth by Ally and Jenny, and it's modeled, I believe, after something that Mayor Driscoll in Salem uh, has put together in the past week or so. And uh, you know, it it doesn't, it's not exactly modeled the way we normally ask the board to put together committees. Normally, we would put together a structure, ask you to approve it and then go recruit candidates. Given that time is of the essence, businesses are struggling and are very interested in what a reopening and recovery plan looks like. We've put before you a recommended slate of applicants, um, but are also open to others joining if they uh, expressed interest uh, as well. I don't think this is meant to be an inclusive, not exclusive process. So um, with that, I would ask with the board's indulgence if Jenny or Ally wanted to add anything, but I think this is a good, uh, smart thing we can do to try to help our local business community.
Ms. Rate?
I don't have much more to add from Adam's uh, presentation, just I'm uh, very enthusiastic about the opportunity to both look at the short term and the long term, and I think that the the focus on recovery is very important and may endure well into the future. So there's some immediate issues, but then of course, this will be a long-term um, focus for the town for at least up to another eighteen months. And um, there may be, you may be seeing some program suggestions, policy changes, things that will help to assist in that recovery, and I'm hopeful that that's what can come out of these dialogues, as well as anything else that will assist businesses in Arlington to be able to operate successfully.
Thank you, and if I could, I could call on Ms. Carter and just ask her to say her full name and her job title, just for the record.
Sure, my name is Allison Carter, uh, I'm the economic development coordinator for the town, usually hear me as Ally, but full name.
Ally, the person, I I've probably thrown three ideas that I've read about state grants, federal grants, and I'm so excited, and they just came out that morning and I'm oh for three, because every time I've emailed Adam, he's emails right back, oh yes, Ally just finished the application, it's on, she's put in for that grant, whether it's through the attorney general, whether it's through the state website and, but I'm gonna keep trying, I'm gonna try to find one that you're not already on top of, but I'm oh for three, and I don't like to lose, but uh, back to you, Ms. Carter.
Please do, I love getting suggestions and I don't want to miss anything. Um, I just want to say, uh, thank you for entertaining this and having us here tonight, and just that um, this is really an opportunity for us to give the business owners a seat at the table. We need to have their input to do this effectively, um, and so I um, I've heard so much from so many of them, things that I never would have thought of. Um, so their input is just invaluable, um, these are things we can't come up with just sitting at our desks or home offices, as it were. So, thank you so much, happy to answer any questions with Jenny, if you have any.
Okay, um, and I did hear from only one of my colleagues on the board, who also is a small business owner, I would classify that person as. I can say he, because it's all men, but um, beyond that, first I'll ask questions and um, if um, if I should make an appointment tonight for the select board so they can um, proceed on, or if people want to get back to me. We'll see how that goes, but we do have um, Mr. Heard who has contacted me and indicated to be willing to volunteer. And with that, I will start with Mr. Heard. No, let me start with Mr. De Corsi, oh, go ahead, Mr. Heard, go ahead, sorry.
No, no comments, I think that, other than I think this is an excellent idea, and thank you for Ally and the whole staff to for putting it together, and I know there's a lot of business owners that are struggling right now, and a lot of people kicking around ideas, and to have a nice think tank for everyone to come together and figure what we need to do to move past this, I think will be really beneficial for the town, and like I said, I don't want to throw up my hand and push anyone out, but you know, as a small business owner and someone that's in town, you know, all weekend, I I would love to be the board representative on the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Heard, Mr. De Corsi?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and and thank you, Ms. Carter and Ms. Rate for for the memo and the the reference to Salem too, I did go on their website, and that's, that's an impressive task force that they've created um, out out there, and and hopefully with the the number of people you have here, there there can be ideas generated and and things that um, you know, we we may not be thinking on the government level, but uh, that can be done within the community in Arlington, so thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, um, Mr. Dunn?
Happy to support this great idea.
Mr. Kuro?
Thank you very much, I mean, I think you have a great cross section here of Heights Center, East Arlington. So it's a good mix of our business community, our nonprofit sector, uh, cultural um, sector, so we're we're all gonna have to work together on on this um, this recovery. We all know that that small businesses are suffering and struggling, and I don't know if you can answer this, uh, through you, Madam Chair, if if Ms. Carter can say, are are you specifically aware of of businesses that are on the edge right now, um, in the face of the crisis?
Ms. Carter?
I think we all sense that they are, but but.
Yes, um, unfortunately, there's a wide spectrum of responses and states that people are in, um, and some people really um, are already reckoning that this, that this is the end, but it's, you know, I I don't know if, since I've spoken to them, they've gotten CARES Act support or something else came through, um, so it's also their news to share when they're ready to do so. But it it really is a a dire situation for many of our local business owners right now.
I appreciate your um, maintaining uh, that list of resources, not just local, but state and federal, I've I've referred a couple of um, people to you, I know already in the past couple of weeks, so thank you, your job is more important than ever, it was already pretty damn important.
Okay, um, I think I I probably already said all my my remarks, so with that, I will take a motion from one of my colleagues to approve the creation of the Arlington Economic Development Recovery Task Force in that um, uh, we appoint Mr. Heard as the uh, selectman representative to that committee. Um, and then some, a little different motion, is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
By Mr. Kuro, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De Corsi, any further questions and comments, if not on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi? Roll call vote, please Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes, and that is a unanimous vote, and thank you once again to Ms. Rate, uh, Ms. Carter, Ms. Warko, um, who really, I know I've said it a couple times, but um, I can't tell you how many, you know, town employees that are working remotely, um, and if anyone wants to know what that means, um, they're definitely putting in, it's supposed to be thirty-seven and a half, but um, putting in anywhere from fifty to sixty hours a week, and I'm always so pleased and a little bit angry when I send out an email and off hours on the weekends, and you guys respond to me within the hour, so um, even though you really technically on the clock, as they say, so appreciate all your efforts. Um, and with that, agenda item six is closed, we now will have a warrant article hearing, article fifty-one revolving funds, Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, this is your uh, typical revolving funds article. I believe the deputy town manager provided a list of revolving fund balances, uh, along with uh, the projected uh, needs, and there, Mr. Poehler is, right on cue.
Okay, um, if I could, I think I'm hearing from Attorney Heim to now call on our deputy town manager, Mr. Poehler?
Sandy here muted.
Hello, everybody, nice to see you again.
Hello, if you could just say your name, just for the record.
My name's Sandy Poehler, I'm the deputy town manager. And uh, what you have in front of you is our three documents, a uh, one called warrant article text, which is a text of the warrant article, there is a second article, uh, piece of paper called mem to SB from town council, uh, it's an explanation of what uh, Attorney Heim just said. And then finally, the article language that I provided, which is Article Fifty-One Revolving Funds Doc, uh, which is the uh, language with the amounts for each of the different revolving funds uh, to put forward to town meeting. Uh, I will just say in summary, um, all of these amounts are the same as they have been in previous years in terms of their authorization with two exceptions. One is that we increased the um, authorization for the town hall rentals fund, uh, up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is because um, Christine Bonjourno requested that we do this, um, she currently has an existing revolving fund for uh, Woodmore Robbins, uh, that they use for various events that happen there. But as it turns out, that that fund in and of itself does not pay all of those costs that they sometimes have used, the town hall fund for paying for things that happen um, in mutual areas between the two. And at budget time, she requested, and we approved the idea that we would move toward basically creating one fund, uh, in order to pay for all those activities, and that would be the town hall fund. In researching it further, as we were preparing this, I think it's become apparent, we're gonna have to come back in the fall for with a new article to amend the language for that revolving fund, uh, to expand the town hall fund to include some of its other purposes, but uh, at this point, uh, until we can do that, we would request that you approve uh, the larger amount for the town hall fund. The other one is the fund for um, council on aging program, which is increased to a hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is at the request of Christine Bonjourno, feeling that um, she thinks once we have um, council on aging, uh, senior center up and running, that there'll be more programs there, and she wanted the flexibility to be able to run a larger revolving fund. I can go through any of the other funds that people have questions about, but they are the same as they've been from previous years. The final thing that I would note is I did send to the um, select board office in the files I sent along with these documents, the uh, the document that Eda Cody prepared that goes at the end of the select board report showing what the expenditures in broken down into major areas for all these funds have been for the previous year. So you do have that as part of what you can include in your report to town meeting. With that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler, Mr. Dunn?
Uh, I move to recommend no action on the uh, on the article. Excuse me, I, wow, I'm gonna recommend approval, sorry, I zoned out and I flipped my, flipped it out in my other head.
Skilled, you know what out of me, I'm like, huh, the former finance committee members, shutting down revolving funds?
Honest to God, I was in the back of my head, I was thinking about how we done no action on everything and how we had a consent agenda, and uh, just uh, like that was running through the back of my head and the wrong words popped out of my mouth.
I second your second motion, but not the first.
Uh, Mr. Dunn, uh, move approval on Article Fifty-One, um, with the uh, amendments to increase town hall rentals fund to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and the council on aging program to one hundred thousand. I think that was what Mr. Poehler, yes, put before us, uh, this is a warrant article hearing. Uh, if there's anyone who uh, from the public who wants to speak on this, uh, wave your hand or use the, what is the, is it the star nine, Mr. Chaplain, star nine feature in your phone?
That's the case, yes.
Okay, and just wait a couple seconds.
I I do see Mr. Kuro uh, has his hand raised as well.
Okay, um, so I will turn to Mr. Kuro.
Um, thank you very much, Madam Chair, I don't usually dig into this this one too too deeply, but I I wonder if we, if um, through you, Madam Chair, if Mr. Poehler could um, just briefly uh, summarize, there there are few funds here that have had no activity on them, and um, I I just wonder if you can just give a quick rundown on on um, on those ones.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler?
So as Mr. Kuro points out, there are some funds that have had a lot of activity and some funds that really haven't done anything. So just going down, I guess I'll just go quickly through the whole list here, uh, I can do it fast. Uh, the first one is for private repairs, uh, private way repairs, um, two hundred thousand dollars, we did about um, we took in money last year but didn't do any work there, same thing for public way repairs, so this really has to do with when um, DPW can get around to actually doing, getting this work contracted, and they tend to come in spurts. Fox Community uh, Center Rentals, uh, there was no activity there, um, and it's, I think it's been the same balance as as it was from last year, but to be honest, I don't know why they, what they're doing over here at the Fox Library. I know there have been a lot of changes in the last couple of years, uh, that I think has led to this fund not being in use. Uh, Robbins House, we already talked about, Conservation Commission, uh, does have activity, so I'm gonna skip that. Uh, the Uncle Sam fees, um, that has had no activity, um, again, last year, I don't think it did either, um.
I I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to to uh, Mr. Poehler, before you go to the others?
Yeah.
Yes.
On on this one, I I I vaguely remember a painful discussion at a town meeting about this one year, where I think, I think this one was discussed for longer than the whole school budget. Um, I don't recall what the revenue source is for this revolving fund. This is for cleaning the statue, right?
That, I don't know off the top of my head, I can go into, uh, let me see, just a minute.
That's Mr. Poehler, who's hope hopefully getting us, if he can, the information.
I've got a list here of the um, ordinance. These can be uh, grants and, it just says grants and fees received by the Uncle Sam. These can be grants and, it just says grants and fees received by the Uncle Sam Committee.
Okay, that's enough. Yeah.
Defines it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Carroll, you will? I think he's indicating he's all set with that.
With that, with that one, I think there was just one more with no, with no activity. I'm sorry, which, well.
I think if I can just skip down.
Gibbs has no expenditures and Cemetery has nothing, so.
Oh, the Cemetery Chapel Rentals. Just looking at the, these are rental fees associated with the rental of the Cemetery Chapel. Actually, I'm going to have to ask the town manager if he knows what the situation there is because I just don't.
Mr. Chapitlin?
This was established, I have to say, five, six, maybe even seven years ago, actually at the request of a former board member. With, with the hope that we'd be able to get a rental program up and running for those who might use, like to use the Cemetery Chapel for events, much like the Town Hall and the Woodmore Robbins House and other venues in town are used for rental. To my, to my knowledge, there's never really been much success in utilizing it as a rental. And I think that's because there's still somewhat significant renovations that would have to go into the chapel to make it an attractive venue. So that, that was, I'm positive of that being the impetus for the creation. Whether or not there's a way to breathe life, breathe new life into that idea, we could take a further look at.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
The only thing I would say is that, you know, I'm not inclined to move an amendment to the, to this right now, but you know, we come up on next year. We're at a decade with, with no activity. I, I just have to put the question out there about whether or not we shouldn't be looking at cleaning up some of these revolving funds and maybe consider winding them down if they, they really don't, aren't serving the purpose that we thought that they originally would serve. That's all.
No, that's a good point, whether it's in September or next spring. I'll leave it to others to decide, you know, what the time course and that would be, but I, but I agree on those points. Okay, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Carroll to move approval on Article fifty-one into increase Town Hall Rentals Fund to one seventy, one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The Council on Aging Program increased to one hundred thousand. Any further questions and comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, Attorney Heim, roll call please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. That's a unanimous vote. Article fifty-one and warrant article hearings are closed. We now go to agenda item eight, correspondence received. We, this is comments from Beth Malofcheck regarding CDVG HUD funds. I ask this to come in the normal course of business when we receive requests and the like from residents. So that's why it's on there. Is there a motion to move receipt by?
Moved.
Mr. Hurd, is there a second by?
Second.
Is that Mr. Carroll? Sorry, I still can't see the right side of my, it keeps saying, and what is it? Set up your calendars. I don't know. Won't let me close it. Any further questions and comments? Move received by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Attorney Heim, roll call please.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah, oh, sure. Yes, Attorney Heim.
Is Mr. Dunn still with us?
Ooh. Ooh, I don't, I can't see the right hand side, but he used to be right in the middle under me, right there, right? He's not there.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Attorney Heim?
Ashley, if you're, I believe you're on the call, if you can please note that it looks like Mr. Dunn has changed over to call in. I see him on the call-in listener as an attendee, but he's not on location. We should note that the time is nine thirteen.
So noted at nine thirteen PM, Mr. Dunn left the meeting, left the video portion of the meeting and now is he back?
At nine fourteen, he returned.
Faster than a speeding whatever. Okay, so Mr. Dunn, you're back. You can see and hear us all now?
I can, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, on a motion to move receipt by Mr. Hurd, I don't know where I wrote it. Second by security, any further questions or comments? If not, Attorney Heim, roll call please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. Okay, we now move to new business. Virtually to my left, Attorney Heim.
New business, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you so much. Town Manager, Mr. Chapitlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, town's leadership team continues to meet daily and brief on our response to the pandemic. So we continue to work locally on our response. And as the board knows from the creation of the task force tonight, we're actively talking about what recovery and reopening will look like in the days and weeks to come. I continue to talk to my colleagues regionally, as well as, as a, as a group of local leaders, talk to various state officials so that we're having as much of a dialogue as possible about what the state is thinking in terms of reopening and recovery. But we'll continue our plan to send out updates every day. The Board of Health will be meeting Wednesday to consider whether or not it wants to take further measures in regards to face coverings above and beyond the governor's, the governor's order, which will go into effect on Wednesday. And again, we'll continue to plan and respond accordingly as the days and weeks go forward. So just wanted to provide that brief update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapitlin. And also, as myself and my colleagues are aware, that there was a community conversation around face masks, face coverings, face shields, as well as possible exemptions for both children and adults in terms of medical disabilities, developmentally, developmental disabilities and others. And I had various people, one was Lauren Bellin, who's an Arlington resident. And she had reached out to the town manager and then through the town manager with Christine Bonjourno. And thinking that she was going to have to maybe educate and make a case in point for the small group of individuals where face covering, maybe a shield is appropriate, but a mask isn't. And in some cases, nothing at all. And she wanted me, as well as everybody on Facebook, there had to be sixty, seventy comments that were impressed and grateful that our town management and town officials are already aware of this small group of individuals and certainly take that into account. So I, another reason of Arlington, because we, we know who our residents are. With that, Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I just want to, we talked about it in our last meeting, the Arlington COVID nineteen Relief Fund started last week. It is now accepting donations and, and tomorrow is Giving Tuesday. And I want to just commend the town, the town manager, Christine Bonjourno, the Arlington Health and Human Services Charitable Corporation for, for starting this. And it's at www.AHHSCC.org. If you go on the town website, you'll see it. That's for donations, but I also know that there will be information going out for people who are going to be in need of these funds. And, and so as the funds are accumulated, I know the word will get out and we want to reach out and, and help our neighbors and, and help people in need. And, and tonight, you heard earlier, we, we voted CDVG funds to help for tenant assistance. This COVID nineteen relief fund is, is actually charitable organization to, to help neighbors. And maybe down the road locally, there may be an opportunity to even dedicate some CPA funds to, to people in need. So we're, we're all working together through this. If you can help through a donation, great. If you need services or need help, this, this fund is going to be there. So I just want to point that out and thank every, the individuals who put that together.
And thank you, Mr. De Corsi. You've taken off one of my new business. I'm basically in email contact with little over half a dozen all single mom with children households who are, you know, when I read their stories, I've offered to try to give them money myself directly and then they won't take it. But there's certainly a need out there. And I know the manager and Christine Bonjourno, our Health and Human Services Director, are close to wrapping up, you know, an application, application process. But the big thing was to get enough money into this account so that we didn't set anybody up for false hopes. We want to make sure when we put it out there that we can help. But it seems like I've heard a lot of people speak about this fund and people have contacted me individually have pledged donations. So thank you, Mr. De Corsi. Any, any further new business?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, who's to my left now? Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually do have something tonight. It's a fairly serious one, actually. I sent out an email this weekend to the Arlington List and to a few other places about tone and message in the time of Corona. And what I was basically, the, and I'm going to resist reading the entire thing here. And it occurs to me, I should post it on my blog, blog at DanDunn.org, and I'll do that after the meeting is over. But the short version is that we've, as select board members and as town have received both directly and we also see, get CC'd on messages that are sent to town employees that have rhetoric and accusations that's really asymmetric, way over the top with what the actual problem is. And, you know, goat ranges from being compared to the Politburo to the, to as accusations as terrible as we're trying to exclude people on the base of race or gender. And I, what my encourage people, what I remind people of in my letter is the, the pain and the cost of that. When we're, when, you know, we have town employees and volunteers who are working really hard to keep the town safe and, and happy and prosperous, that you're also kind of fighting a rear guard action about people who are making some really terrible accusations about you that just have, like, they have no bearing with reality and no bearing with, with the truth. And I, and I spent a long time thinking about that. And I also thought about, realized that I was seeing it also at work in our customer service organization. We, for weeks, like we've been having really good business since, for, for us, you know, this, everybody at home for, you know, stay-at-home company is a really, a good thing for us, actually. And in the beginning, everyone was really happy and it was all very positive. And then we just noticed a couple of weeks ago that a small segment of people were really unhappy. And it is pretty clear to me that it's the stress and toll of what we're all going through. You know, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of uncertainty, and there's a lot of stuff that's turned on its head. And I think for a lot of people that, that fear and unknown is coming out in the form of these really ugly messages. And so I encourage people in my letter to be more thoughtful about how they write and to observe this in other people. And when you see it, to be the change you want to see and to maintain that positive attitude. So I apologize for the length of my new business. I think I generally take a pass on it. And so hopefully I've saved up a few weeks worth of words that I could use tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Carroll?
I am going to doubly apologize for the length to my, my colleagues. Because it's interesting, you know, it's a little discordant because I think this has been a great meeting. I think we had great discussions as a board. We had great discussions with professional staff. We had very productive public comment on, on the meeting. But, but the residents only see like one, the lens of, of these meetings and don't necessarily see the whole picture of what's going on. And I've actually, I think, I think all of us have been a little concerned with, with some of what we've seen. And I actually spent a lot of time thinking about it too and, and putting my thoughts down and writing. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask the board for, for indulgence, for me to, to read some of my thoughts on this. So every year, town meeting members raise their hands and pledge that they'll treat each other, treat others with mutual respect and will conduct themselves in a civil manner that's becoming an elected town meeting member. So disappointing that even as we witness countless acts of kindness in the face of crisis, we've also seen a disturbing erosion of civility in our town's public discourse, often involving current town meeting members or individuals who seek to serve in that capacity. It has also become a sport among some to see who can launch the most inflammatory verbal assaults on members of the board and most disturbingly on our hardworking professional staff. Some of this has taken place on camera. In response to a value engineering decision of the Arlington High School Building Committee, one town meeting member lodged an ad hominem attack on the town manager, describing this project, which is overwhelmingly supported by voters. She referred to it as Chapitlin's big dig. And I thank my colleague, Mr. Dunn, for calling foul on that behavior at that time. In response to the chair's efforts to maintain a well-ordered meeting, something that every town meeting member should understand and value, we were called dictatorial. Off-camera, members of the board have been called undemocratic and authoritarian, both cases by town meeting members or town meeting candidates. At one of our last meetings before the COVID nineteen crisis heated up, we witnessed shouted profanity and verbal attacks against two of our most respected police officers when attendees disagreed with the decision of the board. Ray's voices have become more prevalent than at any time since I was elected to the board eight years ago. A few months ago, members of this board took time off their day jobs, engaged in racial equity and inclusion training organized by the town manager and his leadership team. This is a direct response to resident suggestions. Attending members of the public were invited to participate fully in this board training. Despite this, at the end of the four-hour session, we were shouted at for not doing enough and supposedly shutting out the very people we had welcomed to engage in the day's program and to break bread with us. Now, two incidents over the past weeks, one of which Mr. Dunn referenced, are particularly offensive. In one case, the board was compared to the Soviet Politburo because images of attendees do not display during virtual meetings, although they do tonight. But, you know, a technical configuration issue with Zoom and the lack of speaker images was compared to the historical disenfranchisement of women and people of color. This is disgusting distortion and insult to those who suffered and labored to make gains in the face of real struggles for civil rights. Furthermore, as someone who spent a considerable amount of time in the USSR and devoted two years of his life assisting refugees escaping Soviet oppression, I'm completely outraged by the comparison to that regime. If this board and the town manager were truly devoted to stifling voices of dissent, as some would have us believe, we would not be appointing those same voices to positions of public responsibility and town commissions, something we've done several times over the past months. The second incident, a member of the public and town meeting candidate referred to the process of planning for our municipal election in this challenging time as a sham and accused the town of imposing a poll tax. That despite the fact that this town election will be the most publicized local election with the most public input into its planning and the most options for safe voting in the recent history of Arlington. At our direction, the town manager has been working overtime with the clerk, board staff, town council, acting facilities director, Health and Human Services Department, Envision Arlington, Legal Women Voters, Election Modernization Committee and others to pull off a very complicated logistical feat. More than a hundred people participated in last week's public forum on the election and provided very valuable input. Let's be clear, it is very dangerous to plant the seeds of doubt around the legitimacy of a free and fair election. We've seen that movie before and it doesn't end well. So what are the consequences for the current decline in civility? For starters, dedicated volunteers have chosen to step back from town committees. As their public service has been debased, they've taken time, back time for family and other personal professional pursuits. Others will follow, and I fear that if this trend continues unabated, we will encounter difficulties recruiting and retaining talented professional staff. All five of us have been duly elected by the voters of Arlington through our system of representative democracy. We are motivated by a desire to serve our neighbors, and we all take seriously the privilege we are given to make decisions on behalf of those same neighbors. We do so based on our best informed judgment, not in response to the loudest or most demanding voices. Not everyone will agree with every decision, but everyone is free to voice alternate views. And everyone is free to run for office and vote for new representatives if they're unsatisfied with the town's current leadership. Indeed, many are availing themselves of those opportunities. All of that is just fine and as it should be. What is not fine is to express our disagreements through insults, profanity, hyperbole, false equivalencies, or name-calling. As people who have declared love for Arlington, I have to think we are all better than this. To be sure, this is not a problem that is unique to Arlington. Our national dialogue is plagued by contentiousness as nastiness. And at this year's Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting, panel discussions on the topic of civility through standing-room-only audiences. I'm asking all people of goodwill to help us hit the reset button and reestablish social norms that restore the balance to our civic quality. Tonight was a really good meeting, so God help us, maybe we're turning the corner. I once again ask Arlington residents to be with our friend Elaine Shay. I once again ask Arlington residents to be what our friend Elaine Shea would call upstanders. And I suggest to my colleagues that after the new board is seated in June, it might be worth a more in-depth discussion about any measures we can take to foster a more positive environment that discourages bad behavior. I brought back a number of ideas from the MMA that I'm happy to share, which might form the basis for such a discussion. Lastly, I refer to the tagline that our chair, Ms. Mahan, has used in her frequent email updates to the community during the difficult days of the COVID-19 pandemic. When Arlington faces adversity, we come together and find a way through it. Let's take care of each other. Thank you, and I apologize for the length.
Thank you, Mr. Kuro. On that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by. Anybody want to adjourn? Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd?
John didn't get his new business, I don't think.
Oh, you didn't do your new business? Oh, my gosh, I, how did I skip over you? I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd, Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry.
Well, the preface to my new business was going to be, I don't, that's a tough act to follow, but, no, I, I won't go into details, but I will say that I did read Dan's note yesterday, and it was very well written and well said, and I certainly agree with everything that Joe just said. And just to follow up on something that Joe noted on is, you know, we, we deal on a daily basis in the past few years with so much misinformation and falsehoods at the federal government level and on both sides. And, you know, surely we can do better at the local level to have real discussions about the issues that are impacting us on a daily basis. And then again, just to thank the town manager, town council, and all of our town department heads and town staff that have been working so hard to both manage the daily business of the town to keep the town running and during this crazy time to keep us safe and to deal with the, you know, the elections that, and keep them accessible to people, and they're doing an amazing job. We have nothing but kudos, and I know my board members agree with that, so that's it.
Thank you, and I apologize, Mr. Hurd. Somehow jumped over your seat to the.
I almost just let it go.
Well, that's okay. I now will take a motion to adjourn by.
Will we adjourn?
Mr. Dunn, seconded by. Mr. Hurd. An emotion to adjourn, Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Roll call vote, please. Before I do that, the next select board meeting is May 18th, regularly scheduled. Roll call vote, please, Attorney Heim, on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. We are adjourned. God bless everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Night.